We will call our special work session of January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. We do have a quorum, public forum. Individuals may address the city council about items on the agenda or not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for the council record and limit the remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council. Generally, the city council will not take official action on the items discussed at this time, but may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for a future report, or direct the matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Would anyone like to speak? Bill discussion. Does anyone have questions with the bills? Consent agenda item discussion. Anything that's on the consent agenda? Then we'll go to council information only items. Start with Dan, the life of engineering technician Oliver, welcome.
Good evening. Alrighty, so my name's Oliver Bridges. I started to work for the city in April of two thousand and nineteen. I started out for the city in the Parks Department. From there, I moved to a utility technician position, and I am now in the engineering department as a engineering aide. So, our department staff consists of Greg Kimmon, Brad Rutz, Doug Stewart, myself, Oliver Bridges, and Joe Sabanya. The job overview, we survey in all seasons. We do the design of the projects. We figure out project costs. We meet with contractors. We inspect construction projects. We create as-built drawings from the construction projects. We work with utility mapping. We do the land disturbance inspections, stormwater inspections, and right-of-way permits. We also work with Gopher State One Call inspections and locates, and we work with sewer water freeze-ups and a lot of working with the public. So, we do a lot of topographical surveys. So what that is, is we use GPS equipment to locate and position fixed points of an area. It gives us contours of the land down to the finest detail, and it provides us with a three-dimensional map. And as I go along here, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask. We have multiple different pieces of survey equipment. We use a Trimble T-seven tablet. We have a Trimble S-seven total station, and we have a Trimble R-12I GNSS system. So this is the tablet. This is basically the monitor, the computer screen that you'd have at a home desk computer. It shows us all the mapping that comes up. We shoot, we can use all the points through it to design everything. This here is our total station. What that is, is if we're in an area where we can't get satellite, we can use this, and it'll actually, we can use a back site, and it'll shoot laser beams, and it'll give us the lay of the land that way, and it'll give us height and distance at the same time. And then this here is our GPS. So this is what uses satellites. So long as we can get satellite service, we can use that, and it'll pull from the sky and give us an accurate reading of where we're at. So the design of the projects, we go out and survey everything. What we do is we use the GPS. We'll shoot the grades. We'll shoot mailboxes, trees, gutter line, basically everything that's in the street in the right-of-way. We'll bring that back to the office. We'll bring it into what's called Auto Desk Civil 3D. And from there, we can design contours of it, what the road was before, what we want to change the road to be. We set elevations off of that. We put sidewalks in it, anything right down to road signs, striping. Everything gets designed in there. From there, we can print off the plans. So it'll show what we want to do, where the utilities have to go, where they're at now. If we have any removals, it'll show that. It'll show the elevations of the road, what the storm sewer's at, what the water's at. Kind of just the lay of the land. So, project costs. Typically, the project costs are between one and one point two million. And then you can see over the last couple of years what we have spent, and then what's projected for the next coming years. So as time goes on, projects are getting more expensive. We get more things to do. Just to keep upkeep on our infrastructure, it takes a lot. We have about seventy miles of water main in town, seventy miles of sewer, and roughly a hundred and fifty centerline miles of road. That's excluding alleys, paved alleys. So we'll get into the construction inspection. This is kind of the feasibility of a project. So this was old water services, they're galvanized water services. Typically, on any projects that we're doing the underground on, this is what a lot of the services look like going into the houses. So this is the lines before it's metered. So, like I say, over time, they just get rusty, corroded, and they'll start leaking. This is what some old clay sewer looked like. A lot of times, people will slip-line their sewers. But being the fact that they get so old and the ground moves so much, even if you slip-line something, there could be an elevation difference. So it could have a high point in it, which causes the sewer not to flow. So even though you can slip-line a sewer, sometimes it's not always the fix, being the fact that it could slope the opposite way.
What's slip-line?
Slip-line is when, if you have like, older sewer services are typically clay sewers, and over time, they get brittle and they'll collapse. So what a lot of times people will do to get by with a fix is you can take PVC pipe and slip-line it on the inside of it. So they can typically dig down at the edge of the house or the edge of the street, and they can shove that PVC right inside of the clay, as long as it's big enough. Typically, the clay's six inch, and then you can put four inch PVC right inside of it. This is a couple photos of us installing new water main. We run ductile water, or sorry, sewer main. We run ductile sewer main and plastic. Typically, we run the ductile. If it's a force main, or if it's a heavy-duty, like really fast-current-flow sewer, anytime that we do like a drop manhole or anything like that, we'll run ductile just because it's a little more firm and not as brittle. And then on the right side, you can see that they compact the sewer main. So anytime that we put sewer in the ground, we put a little, they put a little bit of dirt over the top of it, and then they'll run a packer down the edges of it to make sure that it compacts it really well, so that sewer doesn't move over time. You want it to stay in place because they have a specific grade on it to make sure that it flows to the next manhole. This is a picture here of the water main that we put in. We run two different types of water main. We run plastic water main and ductile water main. Typically, in town, we run ductile. It's always been ductile over the years, so we like to keep it that way, so everything's kind of the same. And then on the outskirts of town, we're starting to go to more plastic. It's a little more cost-effective. Over the years, they've gotten a lot better with the plastic, and it seems to be holding up just as good as the ductile. On the left, we're doing a wet tap in the water main. So anytime we have like, if we're putting new water in, if we have like an industrial building or a hospital or anything like that, they can't go without water. So what we can do is there's a company that comes in, and they can put what's a gate valve on the end of it. So they can hook a device to it, and they can actually drill the water main while it's active, and it doesn't spew water out. And then as they pull their machine back out, they can shut the valve, and then the water was live the whole time that we tied into it. So that way, no one goes without water. Typically, we only do that if it's a bigger business, or if it's something that can't go without water. On the right-hand side, we have a saddle and a corp stop. What that is, is anytime that you get to a service on a house, you got to be able to tie off of the water main to get the service in. So we put kind of like, it's like a saddle that goes over the water main, and then you take a drill, and you basically drill a hole right into the main, and you tie like a corporation stop on it, and then you can run your copper into the house.
Is that temporary?
No, that's permanent. Yeah. So when they put these on, there's a little corporation stop on them. And basically, what that's for is just to shut the water off quick once they get the hole drilled. And then once everything's tied together all the way, we turn the water on, and then we inspect it to make sure there's no leaks or anything before we backfill it. Here's a picture of them installing a hydrant. So anytime that we install a hydrant, we do what's called a tee. So you'll cut the water main in two spots. You'll put it like a tee in it, and then you'll shoot off to the hydrant. And then we'll put a gate valve just before the hydrant, and then we'll have the hydrant itself. Anytime that we can get a gate valve on the main before the hydrant, we'll do that also. So if we ever have problems in the street anywhere where there's a water break, or we need to shut one part of it down, we're able to do that, but still keep flow of water back to that point. So essentially, we'll never lose water in any more than a one-block area at a time. So here's a picture from last summer's projects. This was some six-inch sewer service that we put in. On the left side, you can see in some of the, in, back in the day, they went, some of them went shallower, some of them were deeper, so it's hard to tell. We'll never know until we get to digging the projects. So what we do is we design the sewer as deep as we can put it. And then when we get to the project where we find out where people's services are, we have availability and room to get them to the slope to be able to tie them to the sewer. So on the left side here, you can see their sewer was a lot higher than our main. So we just do a drop-down, and then we run a slope to the main. On the right side here, back in the day, they basically just took the quickest route because they didn't have the materials and manpower that we have nowadays. So a lot of times, what they would do is come and trench something. So if the neighbor was putting in a sewer, maybe the other neighbor would put in a sewer also, so they'd just do one trench. So a lot of times, what we find in these projects when we do them is there'll be two sewers running right next to one another. So when that typically happens, we want to get the sewers separated on the property lines, but then we have to tie their sewers back in, so we pull them back in at the property so they can hook up. So down the road, if they were to ever replace their sewer, we'd have them pull their sewer apart from one another, from the right-of-way into their property. So in that way, they'd be back where they should be. On the right is a picture of our sewer cleanout and our curb stops. So this is what it looks like in the end of your yard, where you got your curb stop and your cleanout before we bury them. So basically, the service will run up, and then there's a cleanout that comes up that if a plumber or yourself or anything ever has problems, you can clean your lines out. On the right-hand side, we're insulating our services. A lot of times, we need to do that if we're putting storm sewer in. The storm sewer is a lot shallower than the services, so we want to make sure that there's enough insulation on them that they don't freeze in the winter. Here's a picture of a trench box. They use these when they're digging deeper holes. What happens a lot of the times is when you dig a hole so deep, there's only so much room in the right-of-way to get your hole dug. So the banks end up getting so steep that the dirt wants to keep collapsing in. So they'll build these trench boxes and set them down in the hole, so that way, if the dirt is to collapse in on the sides, it won't hurt the people that are down in the hole. So this is a picture of our stormwater improvements from this last summer. In some of the parts of town, we don't have storm sewers, so we're running their new dry wells. So basically, it's an underground chamber that'll hold water over time, and then it'll dissipate out. So it's a big, basically a big holding tank with holes in it. And then over time, when it rains, the water will come into it, and then over time, it'll dissipate and to get the water off the roads right away.
On those dry wells, do you put certain type of material? Like, do you put like a sand layer, then a gravel layer, and then a rock layer to kind of filter out particulates as they kind of go down into the soil?
Yep. So what we do is they'll dig the hole down, and we'll have an elevation for them of what it's got to be at to the top of our casting. And then what we did is we put rock, like denser rock, like almost like river rock in the bottom. And then we set this plate on it that's got a drain in the bottom. And then we put the dome down in it, as you can see on the right there. And then we wrap it with GeoTextile, so it's like a fabric that'll keep the fines from coming in it. And then we pour rock all the way around that to the top. So then as it rains, it'll come down into that center part. And then as it slowly starts to dissipate out, it'll creep out through the rock and then through the Geo, and then into the ground, into the soil. So on one of these dry wells alone, we typically use three to four dump truck load of rock. So our as-built points, as we're out in the field inspecting the projects with our GPS equipment, we shoot every fitting, every bend, everything that they have. We have, we can use the GPS to shoot those, and then we'll know exactly where they're at for down the road. And I'll kind of get into that in a little bit here. Soil compaction. Soil compaction is a big part of the job. Once they get done with the construction project of the underground, we want to make sure that the base layer of the soil has a well-compacted base to it. Otherwise, when we go over it with the Class Five and the paving, it just won't hold up. So we want to make sure it's very firm. In this photo here, we had to do some dewatering in an area that was a little wet, so they couldn't get the sewer and water main in. So what they'll do is actually, once they get the new main in, they'll disconnect where they're dumping the water to and put it on the road to make more compaction out of it. Construction staking. So we do all our own construction staking. So we'll stake out where the water mains got to be, where the sewer mains got to be, the height and elevations on them. We stake for gravel on the roads. We stake for bituminous. We stake for curb, everything. So what we'll do is we'll go out and we'll pound a stake in the edge of the road, and then we'll give them an elevation on it. And then on the backside of that, there'll be a stick, and it'll either have like a C or an F, which means cut or fill. And then what they'll do is they'll go to that stick, and they can measure off of it, and they can say, okay, from this point, I know I have to have the top of the water main six feet below this if it says a cut of six. So then they'll know off of that stake, they can shoot that with their handheld, and then go down in the hole and say, okay, I'm six feet, or whichever way they have to go. We also take care of the concrete in the bituminous paving, so we'll do the inspection on that, making sure that the bituminous is hot. We do quality tests on it where we send it out to make sure it's passing all the grades that we wanted on it. The concrete curb, we'll walk behind the machine with a level and make sure that it's flowing in the right way and that we don't get any bird baths or low spots in it. Project completion. These are a couple photos from some of the projects that were completed in town. On the left is a rain garden. A lot of times now, we need to treat our stormwater to meet some of the permits now. So what we'll do is we'll build rain gardens in these streets that the water will come into. It'll sit in it, it'll filter it, and then it can go back into the storm sewer. If we, in the event of a big rain, otherwise, we hope over time, they'll just drain out. This was another project that we did this summer. It was Arc Park. We paved the parking lot. When we pave the parking lot, anytime that you disturb ground or pave it, you have to treat stormwater that's going to run off of that. So we put a pond in to treat the water before it enters into the storm system. So after we do all the inspection on the projects, and we shoot all those points, and we come back in the fall or winter, and we can create what's called an as-built drawing. And that's basically what happened over the summer. We can design it into maps that we can have for the future, so we can find where the curb stops are at. We'll know where the fittings are at on the main, any sewer services, anything like that. And then what we can do, once the as-built drawings are made, we can download that back into our GPS, so then we could go out in the field. And if someone ever had a problem with their sewer, or they couldn't find a curb stop, or we need it for some reason, we can go right out with the GPS. We can stake it out, and it'll take us right to that point. We create all our own utility maps. This one here is our water main. So we can, all the dark blue are our water main, and then the light blue off of it are the services, and then the yellow are the curb stops. So we actually have these downloaded in our tablets, and you can do it in your cellphone also. So if you're out in the field and you need to find a curb stop, it's GPSed in our phone that it'll take us right to that curb stop. We also do all our sewer maps in there. So we'll have the sewer main throughout the whole town. It'll tell us which way it flows, where the manholes are, if we ever need to check them in the event of needing to get inside of them. And then we also have all of our streetlights in our maps. So in the inspections and permits, we do land disturbance inspections. We inspect sediment discharges, construction entrances, inlet protections, stockpile locations, erosion, off-site, and negative wetland impacts. So what that means is anytime that anyone disturbs the land, we'll go out and inspect it and make sure that it's not having a negative impact on the wetlands, meaning it's not, there's not dirt flowing into someone else's property. There's not dirt flowing into waterways. There's not anything tracking out onto the road, anything like that. We do stormwater inspections. That's the limitations on how much water can be discharged in the city storm sewer system. We check our inlets and sediment ponds, meeting stormwater requirements. So all the ponds that we put in, we need to go out and check them and make sure the sediment doesn't get built up in them because we don't want that flowing into the stormwater system. At the event of them building up, we'll go out with one of our VAC trucks and clean them out. And then we take care of all the right-of-way permits. So we review private contractors' work within the city road right-of-way to assure restoration work is up to city standards, assuring city utilities are not damaged in the process. So anytime that anyone digs in the city right-of-way, we'll get the permit for it. We'll approve it. We'll tell them what they can and can't do. And then we'll go out and inspect it once they're done to make sure that they put the road back to the way it was. So on the left is a picture of our storm system. We have a catch basin, and then the black is bio-rules. And what they'll typically do is if anytime that land or a lot will drain towards a storm sewer system, they got to wrap these bio-rules all the way around the property so it doesn't drain to it. Or they'll put what's called a silt fence up, and that'll keep the sediment from coming into our storm system. Basically, we want to treat the water and get the filter, the fines out of it and the dirt before it gets into our system. On the right would be a violation of that. What happened was they did some work in the boulevard. They didn't have anything to protect against the gutter line. So the dirty water came over the gutter line and then got into our storm sewer system. And then at that point, we got to send someone out from our department, our streets department, to clean the storm sewer out. We also do Gopher State One Call inspections and locates. So anytime that anyone's digging within the city of Little Falls, they're supposed to call Gopher State. We'll get a notification for it, and we'll go out and mark our utilities so that way they don't get damaged in the process of someone digging. We also do some work with sewer and water freeze-ups. A lot of that happens in the winter. Last winter was, got pretty bad at points. We didn't have a lot of snow, and with the cold weather, it doesn't take much for that frost line to get down. And once it gets down there, it can start freezing water lines and things. Typically, when they freeze, they'll break. If it's within the right-of-way, we have to go out and fix it, which can get very interesting in the wintertime, being that there's a frost layer we got to dig through, and then we got to get down to it and fix it. Here's a picture here of one of our water mains that broke in the wintertime. And then on the right, that silver piece is called a water main repair clamp. And what we'll do is we'll go down, we'll dig down to it. And if it's just a little crack in it, we can put one of these over the top of it. And then there's just, there's torsion bolts on it, and it'll tighten it against the water main, and it'll stop it from leaking. If it's a big area, we'll have to cut it on both ends and put a new piece in. And then on the top of it, sometimes when we get down to them, it can get interesting because you can end up being on top of someone's sewer service or water service, and that's what happened in this instance. So as we were down there, we had to cut the service to be able to get our portion of it fixed. So then we had to replace the sewer service. And then in the water distribution, within the engineering department, we take care of some of the old water meters. Some of the new ones, anytime that they have problems with them, we'll replace them, fix them, rebuild them. We go through and look at the old ones, see if they need replacing. Sometimes we can replace the guts in them. Sometimes we have to replace the whole thing. And then, these are MIUs. So what they do is they send out the reading to our towers. We have two towers on our water towers in town. So they'll take a reading from the water meter, send it to the tower, and then it'll send it to a network that we can log on to at the city here and see the consumption of all the meters in town. And that's the day in the life. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Oliver.
Yes, thank you.
Good job.
A lot of different things to do there.
Thanks, Oliver.
Next, we'll ask our police administrative specialist Lacey Bergard and police records technician Mandy LaBlah to share with us. Thank you. Welcome.
All right. So day in the life at the Little Falls Police Department. We're just pretty much focusing on the records area. I'm Lacey Bergard, and I've been with the city just shy of four years.
I am Mandy LaBlah. I have started this last summer at the police department. I have a clerical enforcement position. I handle the calls for service, the records, reporting duties pertaining to police operations. I work daily with the public administrative specialist Lacey, our police chief, the police captain, sergeants, and investigator.
And then as my position as the administrative specialist, I work with the clerical, technical, and administrative part of it, managing the support functions of the police department. I manage the police records and also provide direct support to our police administration. I work closely with the chief and also the captain. And I work also with all of the IT stuff with them.
Inside the Little Falls Police Department lobby, you will find me behind the front counter here. Every day varies with what we handle. Some of the typical things that we see, we have people come in to request calls for service. When we see that, we basically radio in an officer to come in and help them file their report. We also take care of all the record requests. These can vary. It can be as simple as an accident report that can possibly be available immediately. Or it could be something a little more detailed that can take some more time and research, possibly looking through our statute book or reaching out to other resources. We help city residents obtain permit to purchase. Once we have a completed form, we can then submit it to the BCA to run the background check. Sometimes we do have to reach out to other agencies if they have lived elsewhere outside of our jurisdiction in the past five years. Once we have all of the information back, we then check for potential disqualifiers. Once we have everything cleared, we can provide them with the permit. We also help predatory offenders stay compliant by updating and changing their information. We periodically have people come in to request a property watch. Once we have all the information from them, the timeframe, the keyholder information, we can then update it on our homepage so that way our officers have the information and can check on the properties as needed. We also provide fingerprints. At the front counter is where we hand them the card, and then we will radio in an officer to come in and help them finish it up. Some other resources that you can find inside our lobby. In the breezeway, this last summer, we just installed a prescription drug drop-off box that is available now twenty-four seven. Inside the lobby, we also have Dietera packets that people can pick up. These are free of charge. It's a way that they can take these home, and they can fit up to forty, forty-five pills. It's a way that they can take these home, and they can fit up to 40, 45 pills in them. You fill it with water, and you can throw it away safely in your own garbage. We also have free gun locks for people. And we also have a lot of informational brochures. Those can vary anywhere from being a victim to driving safety.
So this is the records department. So this is where Mandy and I sit every day. And in the records department, stuff that we share, that we do together, is where we take all of the squad videos. There's gonna be requests for that through working with our county, our city attorney and county attorneys. We also do all of the surveillance videos and the transcription of statements, 911 calls. We upload files to all the cases. I do the media reports that get sent out to all of you guys weekly. We assist the officers with forwarding reports to other agencies. And also through that, also applying all of the statutes and the rules that go with sending that information out, because not one report is the same. So also with my position, I also work as a TAC. That's the Terminal Agency Coordinator. So I work as the liaison between our department and the BCA. And we have to go with every, we have to relate all of our uses of all of our, all of our electronics and so on, through the criminal justice data network. And with that, we have to follow all the guidelines with the FBI and the BCA. So I work with the BCA, making sure that we're compliant. This includes, but not limited to, like, all of our certifications. So all of our officers or any kind of users within our agency, they have to take tests. They have to make sure that they're certified and know what they can and can't do on our, with our information. And I'm also responsible for audits and validations for all of that information as well. Other things that we do is we, we do the criminal reporting systems. This is our neighbors. We switched over to this. We've been in this program for a year now. In the middle of, actually in the beginning of COVID is when we started training on it, and we had to get, go through all of that. It's been a smooth process. I believe it's, I feel that it is a lot better reporting. It gives the BCA and the FBI more information of true crime within the city. Also with that, I do all the supplemental reports. So every month I have to do certain reports, like the firearm discharge, use of force pursuits, no-knock search warrants. All of that gets sent off to the BCA for recording. I also work on criminal histories that need to be done, whether it's for permits and license, or if it's just for investigations themselves. We work in, with IT. And I, I also assist the Little Falls Fire Department. So whenever the chief needs help over there, I also can assist with items there. Payroll and buying supplies. And this is kinda, this is a day, it's a mixture of everything. You never know what we're gonna do.
Any questions?
Any questions?
When do you have time for lunch?
Greg lets us have lunch.
Some days, most days.
Thank you. Thank you for all that you do, and thank you for sharing with us this evening. Sprout presentation.
Good evening. I'm Susie Presappio, and I'm here today as the proud president of the board of the Purple Carrot Market. I'm also delighted to have with me today Arlene Jones from Sprout and Birdie Peterson from the Little Falls Farmers Market. Together, all three of our organizations have formed an informal collaborative to try to meet the needs and opportunities of the citizens here in Little Falls and all of the surrounding communities. And we're hoping to, to work together to help strengthen the local economies as we all are trying to recover from this pandemic thing. We, we're coming here, and we've come together because we're seeking to meet several needs and opportunities we found within our city and, as I said, the surrounding area. First, there's an increased need and demand for healthy local foods. People really want to know where their food is coming from and know they're farmer, if you will. Second, there's been a real need for increased access to food. We have the ability to, for consumers, the ability to access healthy foods. Like, not everybody can hop in a truck and go out to a farmer's, to a farm and pick up foods from there. They can, some folks have difficulty going over to a farmer's market. We need greater access. And the access is not just on the, the consumer side. Producers need greater access to markets, being able to get their local products to consumers. Third, there's both a need and an opportunity to improve the health of the residents here in our community by giving them access to healthy foods so that they can live better, healthier lives. Fourth, we have an opportunity to expand our local foods, local foods economy. As Birdie will tell you, we have a long, proud history of agriculture in this area, and we have an opportunity to expand on that. Finally, we have an opportunity to utilize foods as an economic engine here in the Little Falls area. Supporting our local agricultural community is the easy part, but it also increases tourism. People actually drive places to access healthy local foods. The other thing is this phenomenon of, of people wanting to know where their food comes from. That's just not a local thing. It's happening through the state and through the country. And by having a strong local food system here in our city, we make our community a more desirable place for folks to relocate. So I would like to talk a little bit now for just a minute or so about what the Purple Carrot does to help meet these needs and opportunities. Then I'm going to turn it over to Birdie and Arlene to talk about how their organizations also work in this area. Purple Carrot is the Little Falls Startup Food Cooperative. We currently have 637 owners. Seventy-three percent of those live within the 56345 ZIP code. Ninety percent live within Morrison County. The Purple Carrot has been in business since 2015. And we currently own and operate the, or own and manage the Victor Mall Building, where we have four commercial businesses and six residential units up above. Ultimately, part of that building will be the home for our grocery store when we get that open. When that full-service grocery store opens in the Victor Mall, we're going to be improving access to local foods. The Purple Carrot is committed to sources, sourcing as much food as we can from local producers. So we now would have a convenient downtown location for people to access food. Interestingly enough, that area is considered a food desert by the definition of a USDA. So we would be bringing a full-service grocery store into a food desert. And it helps with those transportation barriers that we had talked about, where people can't get out to farms. Everybody will be welcome to shop at the Purple Carrot. And with the use or the taking of EBT and SNAP, it'll allow low-income people to also come and access the healthy local foods. Now, before I turn it over to Birdie, I want to tell you that on behalf of the Purple Carrot, we feel really fortunate to have a really vibrant local farmers market and Sprout, a local food hub. It makes the work of a local food cooperative much easier, and it really goes to our mission. So that's part of the reason we are standing here together as a collaborative. So, Birdie, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Susie. My name's Birdie Peterson, and I'm representing Little Falls Farmers Market tonight. And we have the proud history of serving our community since the 1880s. And as you said, back in the day, I can quote that. Back in the day, there was live pigs, live chickens, Christmas trees, you name it. There was no cottage law required to sell your canned goods or baked goods or so. But that also brings us into the day when Little Falls was known as the largest little pig market in the world. Actually, that wasn't quite so long ago, because I was there, and I was the little kid in the truck with my dad with the pigs in the back of the truck, so. But bringing us to today, on that same market, we are operating at the Boys and Girls Club from May through October, each Wednesday and Saturday from 7:00 AM to noon, through the snow sometimes on opening day in May, through the rainstorms in the summer, and the wind that sometimes takes our tents down. But I will say, 2021, we never missed a day. We were open every day, so. Currently, we are the only established farmers market operating in Morrison County. The last couple of years, we have definitely increased our vendors and shoppers. We have an average of about 50 vendors through the season. Some are only there in the spring with bedding plants and asparagus. Some are only there in the fall with their squash and pumpkins. And then we have our regulars that are there all year, but on the average, about 50 per year. And on Saturday morning in July and August, that would really be our peak season with customers and vendors. And that has really become a gathering place for our community there to shop, to visit, to share stories, to gain information from the farmers, from the growers. And we welcome Robin coming down on her bike. So it is a real social, social time also. Starting in 2021, we started accepting SNAP and EBT. And for our first year, we, they was $1,000 worth of usage out of our SNAP and EBT. And that also is increasing our accessibility of local foods to our low-income. We also instituted last summer Power of Produce for our youth. And each child who comes, she, they get registered. They get a Power of Produce token that is worth $2. And that gives them their choice to buy fresh fruit, vegetables, or a plant, such as a strawberry plant or a tomato plant that would produce that. They will get one coin each week. And this past year, we had 187 kids registered, totaling 501 visits with the kids. So doing your math, that's $1,000 into our community, to our kids, that we gave fresh produce to. And we want to thank Compare Financial and CHI here in Little Falls for helping us fund that program. In addition to our normal hours at Farmers Market, we also participate in community events. We were at Markets and Music in the Mississippi, the Lone Eagle Auto Show Swap Meet that's held during Craft Fair Weekend. And before COVID, we were at the Green Fair and at Church Bazaars, County Fair, and such. So on behalf of our local farmers market, we are very proud to bring local food to our customers, promote the health of our residents, while helping and supporting our growers and stimulating our local economy. All the time sharing our local food goals with the Purple Carrot and with Sprout. Thank you.
Birdie, that was awesome.
Good evening. I'm Arlene Jones from Sprout. A 501(c)(3) food hub, which specializes in working with small family farms in procuring locally grown commodities and distributing them to direct-to-consumer hospitals, restaurants, and other large institutions. We just finished a USDA grant, working with two schools in central Minnesota, and produced a manual of 30 recipes that have been scaled up for large-scale production in a goal to continue to increase utilization of local foods and to provide curriculum to our students on the value of agricultural economies here in central Minnesota. One of the things that Sprout has specialized in, in all of its years, is improving access to local foods and improving the health of our communities through local foods. I could stand here for an hour and tell you the statistics on. Our health is largely dependent on our intake of food. Diabetes, obesity, heart disease, et cetera. So we've spent a lot of time really providing education to the communities on healthy lifestyles and healthy communities through food. One of the ways we do that is through access to the two fully licensed kitchens at the Sprout facility, located over behind door eight in the old Crestliner Building. Providing nutrition education builds the intellectual capacity of those we wish to serve, because you cannot just hand somebody who's lived off processed foods a rutabaga or a turnip and ask them to produce something that tastes good that they're gonna wanna eat. So for us, nutrition education is a very high priority. The other priority areas for Sprout are food access, particularly to low-income individuals who are experiencing food insecurity. And to put this in simple terms, do I eat or do I pay my light bill? My gas bill, or do I put gas in my car so I can continue to go to work? Morrison County's food insecurity rate is 9.7%. One of the other target areas that I am personally deeply connected to is services to our veterans and other service members. As the mother of two active-duty military members, I can't think of a better way to provide services to my community than through providing services to veterans. Over the course of our existence, since we opened in 2015, we've provided 1,200 weekly or bi-weekly household assistance boxes free of charge to residents of Region 5, with a focus on Little Falls and Morrison County, 175 of them to our veteran population. We use 100% of our fundraising through fundraisers, through annual campaigns. 100% of all of the dollars we raise provide these free weekly boxes and household assistance, which equals increased access to our low-income residents. We work with small family farms. As a small family farmer myself, I know how hard it is to grow our food and to get it to market. So I am particularly invested in keeping our agricultural land in ag production and supporting our agricultural economy. During the pandemic, we repositioned ourselves in our mobile market. Instead of going out and providing a mobile grocery store to assisted-living facilities, we used it to home-deliver these food assistance boxes to individuals in our community who are homebound due to the pandemic or are vulnerable going out in public to increase their access to local foods. Recent studies have also shown that 15.2% of veterans experience food insecurity. So as I said, one of Sprout's particular focus is working with the veterans' population. So access to food, providing the transportation and addressing the transportation barriers, supporting and strengthening our agricultural economy, and using local foods as an economic engine to continue to circulate dollars in our communities is something that this collaboration, this collaborative of the Purple Carrot, the Little Falls Farmers Market, and Sprout are deeply invested in. So you might wanna ask what a food policy council is, and I'm gonna spend my last two minutes trying to explain it. The central aim of most food policy councils is to identify and propose innovative solutions to improve local or state food systems, spurring local economic development and making food systems more environmentally sustainable and socially just. Food policy councils generally have four functions. Serve as forums for discussing food issues. Little Falls is incredibly blessed to have an up-and-coming food cooperative, a longstanding farmers market, which is more than just access to food, but is a community event, and a food hub. There are only two operational food hubs in the state of Minnesota, and Little Falls houses one of them. So food policy councils also foster coordination between sectors in the food system. Consumption, production, and distribution, and that is the role that all three of these organizations hold up. hold up. Evaluate and lift up best practices. How can we address the issues that are, have been identified by the community members in the communities that you serve, and to support programs and services that address local needs. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So when Sprout opened, I remember somebody making a comment about the number of farmers that are bringing their food to Sprout. Do you have a number?
We work with collaboratively over 150 small family farms.
Okay. And there was also another statistic about the average yearly income of a family before Sprout, and another, and how much of a raise they got when they were able to sell that food to Sprout?
So some of our statistics show that some of the small family incomes have increased by upwards of 10%, by having access to a food hub that has created the market channels to distribute that food, whether it's through household assistance boxes, paid CSAs, which by the way, during the pandemic, increased 157% of consumers who paid Sprout to collect that food and provide them that weekly box. That's huge. I've never seen an increase like that. Small family farm incomes upwards of 10% for some of them.
Fantastic.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Any other?
I have one quick one. As a very active member of our veterans' community here in Morrison County and Little Falls area, I was quite shocked to hear that of these boxes. Do you go out and talk to our veterans' organizations and kind of explain who you are and what you do, and how to maybe let them informed of, do you work with the VSO?
I have direct communication with the VSOs, yes. Going out into the service, the veterans' service organizations has not been something that we have done, but Birdie actually suggested that to me about three weeks ago. So, but I think that that's a great way to provide information on what's available for our service members.
Are you at the Sprout? I'm the commander for the DAV Chapter 12 here in Morrison County. Are you at the Sprout where I could come talk to you and maybe set up a time for you to come and speak during one of our meetings?
Not every day. I was there today. But I'll give you my business card with my phone number, and we can set something up.
Thank you.
I would love to talk to you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight. We have a little more time for other items, and Lori had another item she emailed out to all of us about year-end transfers.
Hopefully this will work. So after we completed bills late last week, I was able to work on year-end items and do transfers that were budgeted, that we have budgeted in our budget. Once I got that completed, I was looking at year-end balances, where some of the funds were coming in. And I, there were three funds or three items that I kind of wanted to briefly talk to the council about prior to bringing up the resolution to approve the year-end transfers. So first one was with the park and rec operating budget. They look like they're going to end the year with a surplus of about $66,000, and that's after making the transfer, the budgeted transfer of $125,000 from the park to the park improvement. So we're recommending that we potentially transfer another $50,000 into the park improvement fund from the park operating fund, and that will then be in the improvement fund to offset some future park improvement expenses that we might incur, whether it's splash pad, ban shell, you know, however we want to allocate that at a future date. But we can take that money out now, transfer it in there. That still leaves $16,000 of surplus in the park operating. It will help grow then the cash balances in their fund. The second one was airport operating. They ended the year with a surplus of about $62,000. Part of that was from some cares and COVID funding that the airport received that went into the operating fund. So of that $62,000, we're recommending that $45,000 of that be transferred into the airport improvement fund. Again, we have a lot of expenses in there for the improvement projects that we do at the airport, and that will help to pay for part of the local share of those projects that we incur. And then lastly, the general fund ended up with a surplus of $100,000, give or take. We're recommending that $50,000 be transferred to the golf operating to help that fund with its deficit and shortfall, that we take $25,000 and move it into the equipment fund. Again, we can earmark that for future equipment fund expenses at a later date. And then we would leave $25,000 in the general fund to, again, help build that cash surplus. I know that we had at one time talked about moving some general fund surplus into the park improvement fund, but since we're able to do that from the park operating fund, we felt that it would be better utilized to go into the golf fund. So if you have any questions or concerns about those transfers, if we can talk about them. If not, that's what we're going to propose on the resolution for the year-end transfers.
I thought it sounded good when I read it. I don't know whether people's thoughts.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, that'll be my plan then. Thank you very much.
Couple more minutes. Any other, other items? Constituent messages? Then we will adjourn until our 7:30 meeting.